Okay, calling the meeting to order. First order of business, pledge of reasons.
Stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
September 7th, at the Marlboro Recreation Building, there will be a blood drive from 3:00 to 9:00. On September 10th, at Marlboro High School, the township and local Chinese schools will be hosting a mid-autumn festival from 2:00 to 4:00. On September 11th, Freehold Township will be holding a memorial service at 10 o'clock at the 9/11 Memorial. English Town will be hosting a Patriots' Day memorial service outside of the Borough Hall at 7:00 PM. And Colts Neck will be having a memorial ceremony from 12:30 to 1:30 at the September 11th Memorial Fountain. Other events to keep on the calendar is Marlboro Day is on September 18th from 12:00 to 5:00 at the municipal complex. And Howell Day is on September 24th from 12:00 to 6:00 at Oakland Park. Mr. President.
Well done, Mary Ann. Okay, here we go. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has duly been advertised in the Esperance Press, issue of May 16, 2011. All municipal clerks in other townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met. Okay. We have minutes approval, motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
That was Mary Ann and Bill. Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Astolfo?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messingrich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have communications on final, four of us. Report, superintendent's report.
We have a couple presentations this evening, but before I get to those, just a few brief items. First and foremost, I would like to thank the members of the HIV committee who are here tonight, the HIB. I think you'll be duly impressed. You know, it's one thing to meet a state mandate and be engaged in compliance, it's another thing to put together a comprehensive program that I think will benefit all the students in our school. So, thank you to you folks. There's been a number of folks behind the scenes that spent a lot of time this summer putting this together. Dr. Hazel will lead us through that momentarily. Also, we're approving the concussion policy this evening, so thank you to those folks that worked on that as well. Again, a tremendous amount of backwork to make sure that we were compliant with all the various requirements, and then taking the guidelines and best practices and moving forward from there with something that we think is meaningful for the district. So, thank you all. Just a few quick items before we get to the presentations. Mr. Boyce and I will be conducting with Mr. Burns tomorrow, beginning tomorrow, final building walkthroughs in preparation for the opening of the school year. So, we'll be out and about at the six high schools over the next couple of days to make sure that we're up and running for that. We feel very good about where we are right now as a district. We did meet, I hosted a meeting with all of the K-8 superintendents this past Thursday. We talked about a lot of articulation, scheduling, and issues on how we could bring to bear the regional area as a whole for purchasing, for moving forward with some technological upgrades and things of that nature. I think it's high time that we worked as a whole region, because there's a lot of cost savings that could be gained through that. And, at the end of the day, when you bring a larger number of students to bear and staff, it gives you much more leverage with certain purchasing abilities. Nothing etched in stone, but it was a nice beginning conversation, and we're going to meet again on October 3rd, I believe, to follow up with where we were. Myself, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Marchese met with Apple representatives last Friday. It was a very productive meeting, and we are strategizing on how we can move forward, leverage technology to ultimately take the place potentially of textbooks and things of that as a beginning step, but also in terms of how we provide our students with the ability to create content within the classroom, which is something where we should be moving as a school district. And we think there's very cost-effective ways to do that, which will ultimately save us money and increase our technology in the long run. So, we're going to have a follow-up meeting with those folks in October as well. The first Community Relations Committee meeting is scheduled for September 21st. I had an overwhelming response of folks that wanted to be involved in that process. It will be more of a forum discussion, an informational session. We invited everyone. I've asked those folks who volunteered for the committee to commit to two large meetings of that nature, and it will certainly help us begin the strategic planning process. So, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hazel.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Sampson, Mr. Moses, Board of Education members, and community members. As Mr. Sampson stated, we have done some extensive work this summer, as well as through the spring last school year. Tonight, our presentation will focus on the new HIB policy that we are looking for board approval for this evening. The new anti-bullying Bill of Rights was signed into law on January 5th, 2011. In accordance with the law, our district has been diligently working to develop the anti-bullying policy and the other policies that are implicated by this law. We all know that bullying is a complicated issue for many reasons. The intent of the law is to ensure that our schools maintain a positive school climate and culture that promotes respect and a supportive and caring learning environment. The intent of the law also is to strengthen standards for preventing, reporting, investigating, and responding to incidents of bullying. This new law requires that school districts update and implement their policies by September 1st of 2011. I'd like to provide some background on our work. To meet this goal, we coordinated a district anti-bullying task force. This task force was comprised of an assistant principal representing the building principal, as well as an anti-bullying specialist that was selected by the building principal. This core group has worked to develop the policy, as well as develop operating procedures and protocols for implementation. Within each school, a safety team has been established to foster and maintain positive school climate. Our administrators, principals, assistant principals, task force members, school safety team, anti-bullying specialists have all received extensive training last school year, as well as through this summer. I would like to take a moment to introduce our teams that are here this evening. Again, everyone here has worked so hard with the district office in moving this policy and all of our processes and protocols forward. For Colts Neck High School, I introduce to you the building principal, Mr. Keith Land, if you could please stand. Ms. Deb Cozar, the assistant principal on the task force, and the anti-bullying specialist for Colts Neck High School, our SAC counselor, Mr. Doug Daubert. From Freehold High School, the principal, Ms. Linda Jewell, and assistant principal, Ms. Shabri Dow. Our anti-bullying specialist is here this evening, Eva Carell, the school SAC counselor, who is the anti-bullying specialist for Freehold High School. Freehold Township High School, principal, Ms. Elizabeth Higley, and our assistant principal is Mrs. Susan Field. Our anti-bullying specialist is our school psychologist, Kristen Torrey. Howell High School, principal, Mrs. Xena Durbeck. Assistant principal on the task force, Kathy Taylor, and our anti-bullying specialist, SAC counselor, Camille Musari. Manalapan High School, principal, Mr. Jeff Simon. Our anti-bullying, our assistant principal, leading the task force, one of our presenters this evening, Levetta Ross. And our SAC counselor, Ronnie Mattel, is the anti-bullying specialist. Marlboro High School, our principal, Mr. Sean Boylan, one of our presenters this evening. Assistant principal, Mr. Scott Lipson, is the assistant principal on the task force. And we have two anti-bullying specialists at Marlboro High School here with us this evening. Karen George is one of the specialists, as well as Amanda Fazio, guidance counselor from Marlboro High School. I want to thank all of you for your extensive work with this process, and I know in the audience here this evening are members of our extended community and our school safety team. If you could just take a moment to please stand, so that our Board of Education members can see our extended group working on this policy. Mr. Flynn, you've got to stand there, too. So, tonight is the second read of the HIB policy for board approval. Our HIB task force this evening will facilitate a presentation on the new anti-bullying law. The program will be structured as follows. It's going to begin with really delving into an understanding of the law, its definition, what it means for our school district, and its implications to school policy. That will be by Ms. Levetta Ross. We're then going to proceed into what the processes, protocols, and means for implementation in our buildings. What does this look like at the building? What are the implications to us at the district level? And that will be presented by Mr. Scott Lipson. The last portion of the presentation will highlight the proactive measures, the prevention programs, and all of the school and district-based initiatives that really convey the message of anti-bullying in our buildings. And that's going to be facilitated by Susan Field. So, again, to our Board of Education members, our team has been hard at work, and I want to introduce to the podium Ms. Levetta Ross to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Our district has had a HIB and hazing policy on record, and what I'm going to do tonight is highlight some of the new things that have to be added to the policy, so that we can see the direction that our district will be going. First will be some of the additions to the definition. One of the additions states that "The new HIB policy refers to any act of bullying, whether it be a single incident or a series of incidents." In the past, a kid may say that they've been bullied by several people, or a few times. Now, it's a series or a single incident. And this incident can happen off-school grounds. If it happens off-school grounds, it must be something that substantially disrupts or interferes with the orderly operation of the school or the rights of other students. In addition, it should be something that a reasonable person would know, under any circumstance, that it will have a physical or emotional effect on the student, whether it's harming them, or damaging the student's property, placing the student in a reasonable fear, physically, emotionally, and so forth. Second, it must, it is something that may have an effect of insulting or demeaning a student, or a group of students, in such a way as to cause, again, a substantial disruption in, or a substantial interference with the orderly operation of the school. Lastly, if it creates a hostile education environment for the student by interfering with the student's education, or severely or persuasively causing physical or emotional harm to the student. So, as we can see, it's really focusing on interfering the educational process of a school and physically and emotionally harming a student. Requirements. Well, the first is, all school districts, as Dr. Hazel said, must adopt a policy to be implemented September 1st. And we have to adopt this policy by going through the process that we've all been through, by including various members of the school community. Now, I'm going to share with you some additional policy requirements. First of all, in our policy, we must have a statement prohibiting HIB of a student, and that was in our old policy. This definition must include the statutory definition, which includes the additions that I just shared with you on the previous slides. This policy must also include a description of the types of behavior expected from each student, and the consequences, appropriate remedial action for a person who commits an act of HIB. The next part is reporting. In our policy, we must have a procedure for reporting all acts of HIB, and a procedure for prompt investigation of reports of violation or complaints. So, what you're going to receive now from Mr. Lipson is exactly how this report is going to take place, and then I'll come back with more requirements.
Hello. Good evening. Exciting stuff, and clearly a lot to swallow. Most of our schools, all of our schools, I should say, have an existing format for reporting bullying. Before we left and exited after graduation, everyone was aware that this was coming to a front. So, as my colleague Field will get into momentarily, we're going to speak a little bit about training. And this is the processes that will be placed at the inception of the school year. So, we arrive one morning, and we have a HIB that occurred. That can avail itself in a myriad of different ways, as you can imagine. As we already indicated, it can happen on or off-school. From there, we have to learn the situation. That can come to us in a variety of ways as well. It's the obligation of any adult employed by the district, teacher, member of the professional staff, support staff, bus driver, custodian, maintenance worker, or a contract and service provider, a Board of Education member, or central office staff as well, to report any circumstance that may evolve into a HIB case. It's their obligation, again, legal obligation. It can also come in the format of a student that is a victim or a witness. Ultimately, should an adult confront an issue of HIB, immediately, the expectation, the obligation is that they would stop it, and then report it. The report would come verbal at first, and it says it would come to the principal. Ultimately, what that will look like is that they would come to the assistant principal, or the anti-bullying specialist. That acronym, ABS, will continually show itself here, but anti-bullying specialist. Almost simultaneously, as soon as we get a report of that nature, we in turn, when I say "we," I mean the anti-bullying specialist, along with the assistant principal, is going to make the principal aware of what is going on, that we are in the midst of a situation where we're looking into a possible HIB violation. After we get the verbal report, we give the reporter, witness, victim, a complaint statement. At this point, we now have the anti-bullying specialist doing the initial investigation. Again, that's required by law and policy. So, the principal will have that report within 48 hours of the initial verbal report. The complaint statement will be within that principal's hands within 48 hours of the initial verbal report. Ultimately, it's going to arrive there a lot faster, but sometimes circumstances avail where we don't have immediate information, the student may not even be in school, so within 48 hours, that document is going to be on the principal's desk, at which time the superintendent will be made aware that we're in the midst of this investigation. Again, principal, principal designate, along with the anti-bullying specialist or the ABS, initiates the investigation. So, once the proverbial train has left the station, we have gotten word that we may have a HIB violation, the principal will have communication with the ABS, anti-bullying specialist, and the assistant principal. We have up to 10 days to complete an investigation. That is under extraordinary circumstances. Most of these investigations are resolved within one to three days, one being probably more likely in most situations. However, we have up to 10 days. Concurrently, once we've launched this investigation, we are also going to reach out to the parents. Again, the principal, or the principal's designate, will call the parents and inform them that circumstances have taken place, we're in the midst of investigating a potential HIB violation, harassment, intimidation, and bullying violation, and have some degree of dialogue pertaining to that. There'll probably be a follow-up phone call, I would say definitely be a follow-up phone call, after the situation is resolved. So, the parents and guardians are informed. As soon as we have resolution, as soon as the documents are completed, for example, we have the complaint statement sent up to Dr. Hazel, which is the immediate person that we report to from the building, she in turn will share this information with the superintendent, and she will also have a more thorough report to follow, and that is our incident report. Once we have that, the superintendent has that in his hand. The parents, and there's closure to the investigation at the building level, again, at the building level, not at central office, the parents can request information pertaining to the investigation. They can request, but certain referral laws and things of that nature, we have to maintain confidentiality and things of that. That investigation, I mean, that request can come up to five days after, or cannot be implemented until five days upon the completion. At that point, if the parent is dissatisfied, they can appeal to the Board of Education. Once everything has been resolved at the building level, and information has been shared throughout this process, again, I want to emphasize that, this is not going to arrive on the superintendent's desk as any big surprise. There's going to be discussion throughout, from the ABS, and assistant principal, to the principal, and from the principal to Dr. Hazel, and ultimately to Mr. Sampson. So, this is not going to be as a shock, "Oh, look, there's a bullying statement on my desk." It's never going to arrive that way. Once we bring closure to that situation, the superintendent, globally and specific to the case, may determine to, that additional interventions are needed for the specific case, or at the whole school, that there's been 17 bullying issues and we need to do more about it, highly unlikely, but worst-case scenario, it's within the right of the superintendent. Counseling, additional training, reduce HIB, training for staff, training for students, so on and so forth. Twice during the school year, the superintendent is going to make a report to the Board of Education, which we said is a violation. You're also going to receive a more frequent highlight of that information for your five school years. So, you'll get that information to you for the specific case in which the parent is appealing to you, dissatisfied. It's not going to happen in every single case, but the parent has the right to appeal the superintendent, ultimately to the Board of Education. And the Board can choose to uphold or overturn, and if the parent's continuing to be dissatisfied, they can appeal to the Commissioner of Education. A lot to swallow. So, in summary, we have a HIB incident that occurred. Again, it's going to avail itself in a variety of different phases. We're going to immediately take that individual, adult student, through the ABS and assistant principal process, where they're going to fill out forms, the complaint statement, so on and so forth. We're going to determine if it's HIB or not. If it's a non-HIB issue, if it's a non-bullying issue, we just proceed as we normally would with any other disciplinary action. So, again, if it's non-HIB, just erase everything else. We're going to keep it, and keep it at the level, report as we normally report, use the forms that we normally receive, and follow the protocol. Should it be a HIB, or, I'm sorry, once it gets to the principal, the principal immediately works with the ABS, assistant principal, we communicate with the parents throughout. And then ultimately, information comes down the line to the superintendent, and then finally to the Board of Education. Okay? At this time, we call Magnus to us to continue with two more policy additions.
Everything that was just mentioned, and that has been mentioned so far, is a part of the law that was adopted by our state, and that is what we have to have in our policy. And in going on with the requirements of our policy, we must also include ways to respond to various acts of HIB. And this may include counseling, support services, intervention services, and so forth. Not every act of HIB will require a punitive response. Also in our policy, as is indicated in number eight, we must have some kind of statement that prohibits reprisal or retaliation against any person who reports an act of HIB. So, if someone reports, and then someone is mad at that person for reporting, and they do something, and so forth, we know how it goes. We have to have some kind of statement in our policy that says that we will not stand for that as well, in addition to the consequences and appropriate remedial action for any person who does engage in a reprisal or retaliation. We also have to include remedial action for a person to have been falsely accused. So, the law is very extensive and includes a lot of information that we must include. I think the biggest, and probably the piece that will consume a lot of our time, in being real honest with you, is the part about off-school grounds. The policy adopted by each school district must have a provision for appropriate responses to HIB that occurs off-school grounds, in cases in which a school employee is made aware of these actions. When I say "off-school grounds," keep in mind that it must also substantially interfere with the educational process of the school and the child. Now, off-school grounds, that could be the rec, that could be the pizza parlor, it could be Facebook. If students are talking about another student on Facebook, and they're bullying that person, calling them names and so forth, that could be an act of HIB. If students create a website, talking about how this person is with red hair, fat, nose rings, or whatever they may do, that could be an act of HIB, if it interferes with that student's educational process. So, it's real important to understand that we are already anticipating, maybe spending quite a bit of time with the social network issue and HIB. The last few requirements, real easy, we must have a statement of how we're going to publicize our policy. We have to include a link on the district webpage, as well as each school's webpage. And on this link, we must have a connection to our actual policy, as well as who are the school safety team members, the assistant principals, the anti-bullying specialists. And all of those items, we have already prepared, and we have them ready for September 1st. The policy also contains requirements for training, and we're going to now hear about training.
Each staff member is required to have two hours of training within their professional development period. That's a five-year period. Being that this law is new, everyone will be trained on that information this year. In addition to the two hours of training, each member on the school safety teams, which many of you have met tonight, have also been attending workshops that are being held throughout the state. Most recently, the HIB task team, consisting of six assistant principals and Dr. Hazel, attended a workshop by Strauss Esme. In the folders that the Board will receive at the conclusion of our meeting, there is a list of all the workshops that all of the members from all six high schools have attended since we started this process. It's pretty impressive. At Freehold Regional High School District, the social, emotional, and character development of all of our students have always been addressed. We continue to be proactive in these areas. All six high schools have created a list of programs that are common to all buildings and specific to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our goal is to educate our students, our parents, and our staff. The state has established Respect Week and Anti-Violence Week, both held in October, to be certain that these topics are addressed with our students. The activities that have been planned during these two weeks deal with respect, civility, and accepting others, and we're going to get more information about that, obviously, when the school year begins. In addition, there are a variety of programs that all six high schools implement throughout the entire year. They start in September, and we go all the way through June, so we're not just concentrating on the two weeks the state designated for us in October. Some of the students that help us in assisting with all of these programs throughout the year are our peer leaders, Students Against Destructive Decisions, Gay-Straight Alliance, Lead for Diversity, and class officers. As you can see, the programs are in various formats. We have presentations, discussions, meetings, handouts, and peer-to-peer groups. We also have available for you tonight some of the handouts that we're going to be sharing with parents at back-to-school night, conferences, and students through the actual meetings when we meet with the individual students. The main responsibility of the school safety teams is to update our initiatives and programs as needed, and that's something we'll be meeting with our school safety teams, and then we meet as a task team to discuss the commonalities between all of them. This concludes our presentation. I'd like to thank you, and we're going to pass around folders for you to include all of this. of this.
It'll be very interesting to see how year one, so we need to approve this and submit it to the county by September 1st, for the county, executive county superintendent of schools approval, and then it becomes, obviously, our policy. The interesting, the most kind of radical departure that the policy puts in play, is that it basically trumps the decision that was issued last year out of Ramapo Indian Hills that said schools couldn't discipline students outside for things that happen outside of school. So it kind of runs counter to that, and how it all plays out in terms of the external activities and how they're dealt with within the schoolhouse will be very interesting, and I think it will be a little bit of a learning experience for everyone, particularly with the proliferation of social media. I think it's certainly an absolutely well-intentioned piece of legislation, but not all the pieces are there yet, certainly. And thank you to the team, I think you've put together a terrific plan of action to move forward, and I am sure that as bumps in the road come, which I'm sure that they will, we'll iron those bumps out smoothly, so thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Thanks, Mr. Bruno. What is the test criteria or threshold used to see if the HIB interferes with the student's educational process? That's pretty subjective, so I don't know what precedent or case law is out there to say that this is something that's typical that would interfere with the student's educational process. And in particular, I mean, if somebody bullies a kid at a pizzeria, I could see a challenge coming about from the defense attorney saying, how does that interfere with the student's educational process? So if somebody could answer that for me, it would be, you know, something that's important.
For our students, again, if it affects them emotionally or socially in the school, where they really are having a difficult time coming to school and being engaged in the learning process, and actually furnish that information to administration, I feel, we feel, you know, we have a right and responsibility to engage the parents, to investigate what's going on, because potentially, if it has happened outside of school, and, you know, that young person also attends the same school, you know, we may have that overflowing into our building. So we do have a right and responsibility to investigate in terms of disciplining a student. That's something that's going to be discretionary with the principal and be discussed as a team and with me. But if it is brought to our attention, and a student, you know, feels uneasy about another student or a group of students in the school, we are going to take, you know, a very strong position in making sure we provide those support services to the student, that we successfully engage the parent, because everybody's well-being, you know, is our responsibility.
You know what might bother, and believe me, I'm probably the strongest proponent of anti-bullying, I'm probably the most overprotective parent that anybody could think of, believe me, when you think about it, but I could see a situation where somebody says at a pizzeria, you know, you're ugly, and one kid would just say, well, so are you, and another one would say, I can't go to school because of it. And there could be another situation that's very valid, where you have an MS-13 gang that says if you show up at school, you're going to be, you know, physically harmed. So I don't know what would be the test standard and how a school administration could determine that. And I really don't know the answer to it. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot with that, but I just don't know. Yeah, maybe you can answer that.
I think if you look at the information, that may not be classified as bullying to our standards, to the things that we work on, but a lot of times, I can tell you from experience, things will happen at the law.
Yeah.
And then the rumor mill starts, and we have situations that go on in the school that really disrupt the school. So those kind of things. And if it's something happened at a pizzeria, and then followed over to the school, and created a lot of drama, that we try to put a stop on. But if it's just, he said, she said, the team would look at it, the special would look at it, and say, that's not really bullying, we'll call the parents and let them know that this occurred after that.
Yes.
I think the sort of test we've tried is that we would deem that as bullying, because that's two kids being mean to each other.
Right.
The question that you raised, I have several workups that have been asked by the audience as well, and Strauss has made the most recent response, we're going to let the cases, maybe future cases, sort of spell this out. But more specifically, to your issue, an incident could occur on Facebook, in which Sally calls Joe fat and ugly. Seventeen kids press light in the conference. Joe feels pretty bad about himself, comes into school the next day, everybody's laughing, everybody's talking, but the perception is that there's a group of kids in my home room talking about him. So now, there's an imbalance out.
Right.
Seventeen kids don't like him, or in this child's mind, seventeen kids. So that's an area where this child has a fear, an apprehension about coming to school, and can no longer, or quite possibly cannot function as he will capacity, because he's intimidated by this round.
So it could reasonably meet the test.
Can that be a better example of an imbalance out? I think that's a very good example, charging Joe of bullying standard.
And to your point, Mr. Estor, I think there's going to be a learning curve for school systems with this. I mean, you know, it's uncharted water in that sense, and as everyone alluded to, it will certainly be on a case-by-case issue, but there is no, you know, lock-solid criteria by which you can simply make an assessment and say, this is bullying, it's kind of a combination of things, and I think that's incumbent on the team to do their due diligence and to make that recommendation. And I think that the legislation builds in safeguards to, you know, we always hear the horror stories, well, I went to the school, and they didn't do anything about it. What this legislation is trying to do is to build in that safeguard for parents to continue to push that process along. How it all plays out, I think that next year, we'll probably be here at this time revising certain aspects of it a year in, because I think school districts across the state will probably, I don't want to use the term struggle, but probably find different levels of success with the changes and implementation, and probably find things that do or don't work. You know, certainly, the bullying specialist is in a potentially difficult spot if something happens within the building. So there's a lot of, I think, potential unintended consequences of legislation that we haven't even stepped through that threshold yet.
Well, I'm certainly happy that it's being addressed in a formal way, so it's good, we're making the right steps.
Through to the chair, I have a question for Doc or anybody in the group. By the way, it's a great presentation. Looking through the agenda, I'm wrestling with the same thing in my district, and I'm one of these so-called experts I'm supposed to be. I'm having a difficult time, so maybe anybody in the audience can help me. I'm dealing with the false accusation component. What do you do when a parent may have an issue with a, I'll use this example, Scott Lipson, a coach, and suddenly I'm getting a bullying harassment email that the coach was intimidating or bullying my son or daughter at practice? How are you guys going to go about handling it? Because right now, I'm up in air about how I'm going to go about it in my district.
I think like they all do, and they could speak also, I mean, it's really going down to a thorough investigation. So, I mean, if somebody is bringing forth, you know, some claim to you, we have a responsibility as the leaders in the building. We now have the anti-bullying specialists who are leading the charge in this, and we have a right to, we have to investigate. Not that we didn't do this before, but, you know, interviewing students that may be on that team, you know, speaking with that coach directly. I think as Mr. Sampson said, you know, this has now opened up the door for really, you know, a lot of cross-communication. And I think what we need to say to parents is, you know, as the building principal, this is something that I have completely vetted, I have gone through all the channels of a thorough investigation, and, you know, that's why we have building principals and administrators in our building that vet through this process. And ultimately, that communication also goes on with the central office, and if we feel that something has not occurred, and we've interviewed our parents, and we've interviewed our students, and we've conducted a thorough investigation, then, you know, we as a Board of Education, as a central office, as a superintendent, you know, we fully support, you know, that investigation of the principal, we have a right to intervene and be involved in that process.
With that said, is there any consequences then delivered by either the board or the building principal, whoever may be, to that parent for a false accusation? Again, this is a question I have, because I'm going to be dealing with this in my little world of athletics. Yes?
One of the things, because I'm sitting in the board, I think it should have come up in the mini workshops we all attended, is that we had to hold meetings with the parents about this new policy about the law. We've already started meeting with the coaches in the building.
That we did today.
Yes. Last week, I believe, I know we had an alibi, and some of the others as the principals, or the others, we've already met with the coaches. And I think what has happened, in addition to what we, by putting it on the website, is just sharing that with the parents about falsely accusing. Because anytime someone uses, and we're now going to say the B-word, we go into another mode, and it's going to be the reporting process as outlined in the PowerPoint. But we have to let them know what will happen if they're falsely accusing, that there's some reprisal. Now, what that reprisal is going to be to an adult outside, you know, we don't know.
That's out of scope.
But a student in the building is within our control.
Right, because, and they would be disrupting the learning environment, and there would be consequences for that, and I think it would be, you know, the disruption to the learning environment would go along with the school handbook, certainly, you know, on our policies and procedures within the building. The false alarm concern from a parental end, you know, the difficulty is, if someone's perception is that it is bullying, they're not necessarily sounding a false alarm in their mind, they are bringing what they believe to be a legitimate issue. And that's where I think what Dr. Hazel said about the thorough investigation, where if you can, at certain points along the line, say, this isn't bullying because, you know, you can mitigate a lot of that. But I think it will be an evolving process.
Okay, thank you.
First, I would like to thank all of the administrators and the teachers and the ABSs for all the work that they've done. Secondly, I think this goes to the point about the kind of work that people do. I know a lot of people who have become experts on education because they went to high school for four years, you know, they think that they know, you know, what teachers or administrators do, and they don't. And this just goes to show about how much we've taken on in the last couple of years. And my last statement is directed to Doug, because I've known him a long time, I never knew he was an ABS, and that is that God bless the coaches in the district, because I would have been brought up on charges every day, and I cannot imagine parents getting involved and telling a coach that he, or charging a coach that he's bullying because he's running his team the way he thinks it should be run, compared to the student who is not only in control of their home, but thinks they're going to be in control of the team as well. So God bless the people of coaching, this is the first time ever, I'm glad I'm retired. So I'll segue into Mr. Boyce's presentation. We had a finance committee meeting this evening, and we met with the auditors, who went through really the process that will unfold over the next couple of months. And I know that Mr. Messinger has a few critical points to state on that, but one thing I did want to state that came out of this evening, and, Michael, I don't know if you, out of the 29 districts, if that was part of your, that what our auditors told us is that one of the documents that school districts need to create for the auditors is really an all-encompassing document that includes, it's known as the CAFRA, right? And it includes all kinds of financial information about the school district. The auditors that are in this district are responsible for 29 other school districts. And I think it's a credit to Mr. Boyce and his team that of those 29, they went out of their way this evening to say to the board that we are the only district that has that document fully prepared every year. So when they come and they see it, they represent 29 districts, and they said they literally have to charge a fee and sit with other districts to put that document together, because they do not have the expertise in the business office to do it, and that's not the case here. So just, I'll segue to Mr. Messinger, but just to point that out, I thought that was impressive to hear from an independent agency unsolicited this evening.
Because I want to see those when you answer the question.
I went to school for four years, but I'll give it my best shot. But, all right, as Mr. Sampson said, we did have the meeting tonight with the auditor, but back on August 1st, we had a meeting, and at that point in time, what we really did was just lay out what exactly the finance committee plans to do for the next 12 months. So we basically talked about the audit, school-level finances, there's a lot of money that runs through the six schools, and that's not even including the parent groups, shared services opportunities or something, we'll be addressing commercialism, tuition revenue, and capital planning. So essentially, what we spent, you know, 90% of the meeting on August 1st on, was the role that solar can play in the budgeting process, and with respect to capital planning, which is what Mr. Boyce is going to brief us on tonight. We just went over the structure of how this whole process is going to move forward, and a lot of what he's going to say is that a lot of it, I mean, it's designed with the appropriate checks and balances that ensure quality work, and that it doesn't become a boondoggle, and there's tight state control, so you can't go out and issue a whole bunch of bonds unless you're guaranteed to get that amount in savings. So it's very important to remember here that there is a very strong structure in place with everything that Mr. Boyce is going to be talking about, that comes from high up above, to really make sure there's no financial debacles associated with this. So, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Messinger. Really, the essence of tonight's presentation is about instruction, and the reason I say that is because we all have a collective obligation to direct the maximum amount of available resources to the classroom that we possibly can. Facilities are a necessary part of our operation, that's for certain, and it's something that, if we don't keep an eye on and maintain properly, will ultimately siphon those dollars out of the classroom. So when I look at a capital plan and our facility planning, I look at it in one respect as a threat, and one that what I would like to do, and the purpose of tonight's meeting, is to brief the board on what the recommended course of action is to address the capital plan. The desired outcome for tonight is to garner support from the board to take the next step, and the next step is a cost-free, obligation-free, risk-free issuance of an RFP. But let me first just brief you on the Energy Savings Improvement Program and what exactly it is. If you remember back in January, when we were developing our budget, we did talk about our capital plan, and we identified a number of different things that needed to be done, and we also identified three funding opportunities. One was the annual budget, one was a refer- One was the annual budget, one was a referendum, and one was what we called an other financing strategy. The annual budget, if you recall, we eliminated that option, recognizing that the economy and the uncertainty of revenues into our budget made it not a viable option to fund big-ticket facility maintenance items with the annual budget. At that time, we eliminated that option, and we moved on to developing the remainder of the budget, knowing that capital planning was not going to be part of that annual budget. Since then, and with further conversations with the superintendent and with the finance committee, referendum, we feel, is not right for this community at this time, which leaves us with the third and final other financing strategy. Going back, I think the state has recognized that school districts were going to be in a difficult position with their facilities. And in June of 2009, they created this legislation, which created the Energy Savings Improvement Program. And what this does is it gives districts a third option. Typically, when you, when you issue a referendum, here's how it works. It is a separate function than our annual operating budget. So, bonds are issued, new dollars come in, we use those dollars to address the facility needs, and then we pay that back through debt service aid over 15 years or 20 years, whatever the life of the bond is. The important thing to remember there is that those annual appropriations necessary to service that debt are new dollars on top of, in addition to, the dollars that the community votes on annually in our annual operating budget. What the ESIP does, the ESIP program does, is says, "Schools, we recognize that you can achieve significant financial savings by putting energy conservation measures in place. Yet, you need the capital to do that." So, they have authorized through this legislation what they call energy service, energy-saving obligations. And it does not, it allows you to issue bonds or a capital lease or another funding mechanism. But what it doesn't do is allow you to add new dollars. So, you work within the context of your annual school budget. So, no new dollars, and it is a repurposing of energy dollars that you would have spent on energy in order to pay the debt service. So, it does strike the right balance between preserving the dollars for the classroom and also do it at a tax-neutral, in a tax-neutral way. So, behind me are, is the chronology of steps that the ESIP program lays out. And new directions and directives are coming out from the state regularly. The last one was this past June, and we know that there is additional information going to be issued for them. But here's the step-by-step process of the, for the ESIP. The first step is a BPU energy audit. We did this last fall. We completed a, an energy audit for the district. And this level of energy audit is, is a preliminary assessment. It's essentially a blueprint for what could be accomplished through energy conservation measures. And Stephen Winters Associates did it for us. There was five pre-qualified firms from the state of New Jersey that you could select from, and we had the entire thing paid for by BPU. So, at this point, we have those energy audits, and we have no dollars invested into the program at this point. The next step is where we are now, and that's to issue an RFP for an energy service company or an ESCO. So, what the state did, the way they've laid this out, is that they've identified 20, pre-qualified 20 firms that they say can provide you with a single-point-of-contact, full-service energy program. That is from the development of an energy service plan through the construction, the commissioning, and the training, and the post-construction guarantee. So, it's a single-point-of-contact. They also put together a sample RFP using a competitive contracting format so that the districts could use this as the mechanism to engage an ESCO in doing the energy service plan. Now, that's a fairly significant document. It's going to be a 300, 400-page document. It is a far deeper plan than the initial BPU energy audit. And it's something that we've done a significant amount of reading on. We've read some of these energy savings plans, and they are very comprehensive documents that will outline what all of our opportunities are, what risks are entailed, what we can expect as a rate of return. And importantly, there's a, there are a couple of checks and balances built into it. The first is, once the energy savings plan is done, that it needs to be independently verified that the calculations are in accordance with BPU protocols. So, what that means is, you can't inflate the estimated energy savings and then issue more bonds to get more work done. The problem with that would be that down the road, as the years come by, and we have those debt service obligations, we need to fund them through our energy savings. And to the extent that the energy savings don't cover those debt service obligations, that's going to then reach into other areas of our operation, which is not what we want to do. So, the state's very restrictive as far as how the calculations go and exactly how much bonds you can issue. So, really, at the, at the center, the centerpiece of the whole process is the energy savings plan. At that point, it looks a lot like a normal construction project. The ESCO, we could, the board could engage the ESCO and oversee and handle the bids, the designing, the specifications, the bids, the construction management. It could handle all of those aspects of it. Or the district can choose at that point to go a different direction and handle it as we typically do, and hire our own architects, our own engineers and construction managers and so forth. And that's fine. Either way, will work fine. It's something that we don't have to decide right now. We need to decide that once the energy service plan is completed.
I haven't seen anything come through yet.
The closeout process is another area where there'll be certain checks and balances. Equipment is commissioned. And what that means, it's an independent engineer will come in, look at the new equipment that's been installed, make sure it's been installed properly, and it's operating in accordance with the design intent. All of this to make sure that we actually achieve the energy savings that we're setting out to achieve. There's also, maintenance schedules are established, our staff are trained, and a validation by a third party above and beyond the commissioning that the equipment is still, and that the calculations are still accurate. Now, parallel to all of this process is financing. And this is, this is really separate and aside from the ESCO involvement. We hire our own bond counsel, our own financial advisors, but what we really need is the energy savings plan to look at what are all of the opportunities and what's the best way to go about funding it. The energy service obligations could take the form of what are called refunding bonds, but it is the issuance of bonds. Remember, though, it's within our means, our existing annual budget, that those debt service payments get made. So, there's no additional tax dollars, as it would be if it was a referendum, and outside of that annual budget process. Another option is a capital lease, and that's for a different scenario. But power purchase agreements still remain on the table, and there's some additional guidance coming out on this as well. Power purchase agreements, you may remember, is when you essentially lease your roof space to a third party who installs solar panels and then sells us energy at a reduced rate. And we can use that funding mechanism to get more capital to handle more facility needs, such as roofing, as well as the cost of putting the solar on top of the roofs. The payback for all of these energy conservation measures does need to be within the, within the 15 years, which is the maximum of the energy savings bonds. So, that's, that's a step-by-step of how the process folds through. I think that looking at what the funding options still remain, the three annual budget, a referendum, and an other financing strategy, I think this is the right approach for us right now. It's cost-neutral. It's going to handle the majority of our facility needs, and it's going to do so within the confines of our annual school budget. There's also sufficient checks and balances along the way to ensure that we don't overreach for energy savings and make sure that we're in the right position to pay back those debt service obligations with the savings that we achieve from the energies. And most importantly, it protects and preserves the dollars that we have in the, putting towards instruction at this time. So, the, what I'd like to entertain questions, but what I'm looking to do at this point is go ahead and develop that RFP for an ESCO to, to do an energy savings plan. And I'll bring the results of that to the board for action. But first, if I can answer any questions on this process in general.
This is actually something that we talked about in the finance committee meeting, be caught, and I don't know all the details. But in the news transcript, there were articles about a local K through eight who had issues with solar panels, and all has not gone well. And I can't speak to what exactly transpired. But this is something that, obviously, going forward, I don't know if the public would ask about it tonight. But since it happened in one of our districts, this is going to be something that people are going to be scared about going forward.
Yeah. What happened in that district wasn't, wasn't with the solar, wasn't with the equipment aspect of it. It was with the financing mechanism. It's how they went out for that power purchase agreement. And I'm not familiar with the specifics of it, of it either, but power purchase agreements are a relatively new idea. And earlier this week, I was at a forum that had a panel, we had a panel discussion, and it was good. There was bond counsel, financial advisors, ESCOs, engineers at the table, answering questions from BAs asking questions about this. And one of the things, oh, and the state, the Division of Local Government Services were there. One of the things that came up is with the power purchase agreements and how exactly they're bid, because districts are going about it in different ways. The Division of Local Government Services said that very shortly, there will be issued further guidance on PPAs, and it probably will include a sample agreement on how to approach that. So, they'll vet that off for us, and that'll be, so we're looking forward to that. Our timeline is good here, because it's going to take, it's going to take some time, a month plus, for me to get through the RFP process. Then it's going to take several months to do the energy savings plan. So, that's, you know, a block of time that the state has to come out with some further guidance on PPAs.
Sean, could you explain what are the other options besides solar panels?
Sure. If you do, and the initial energy audit did this, took a look at a lot of lighting and a lot of HVAC. And our buildings are, some of our buildings have their original sections are, you know, fairly old. So, they, replacing the equipment, the technology has come so far that replacing even the mild equipment that they've recommended in that initial, initial audit, which wasn't a vast amount, still would save us anywhere from 20% to 25% of our energy bill. Our energy bill is 4.6 million per year. That's what we spend on energy, natural gas and electricity. So, it's a considerable pot of money to work with. And so, even the lighting and some of the basic HVAC recommendations that they made, which didn't have considerable initial investment, this was in the initial energy audit, would, would yield pretty decent savings right out of the gate. And we had to do some of those smaller-scale things in order to get 100% of the money back of the cost of that audit, which we did. So, yeah, I think there's some real opportunity for, in the area of HVAC, and even to a lesser extent, windows and other building envelope stuff. But the real player in it all is solar. Solar's the real player. Okay. All right. That's all I have. I'm going to go ahead with preparing an RFP. Mr. Messinger is the chair of the finance committee, so I'll work closely with him in doing that. And you'll be hearing from me shortly and see how those proposals come in, and then we'll take a look at them at that point. Very good? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Okay. Next, we have board reports. Do we have any board reports?
September 12th.
September 12th. All right. Next up, we have my favorite part of the meeting, public participation. We have one, two, only four names, so we'll take care of them in order. First up, we have Paul Shafflin.
Paul Shafflin, Marbrough. A little disappointing here. I had some notes that had disappeared from the table back there. I had something I wanted to read to you, so. Last meeting, there was a woman that got up here, and she made a very poignant statement, I thought, that we needed to put education first, and that we couldn't depend on China to run the country. And I think that's very true. There was a woman of Chinese descent in the audience that took exception to that. She was offended by it. That's her right to be offended, but it's not her right not to be offended in this country. It's a great thing about First Amendment. She wrote a letter regarding the statements, and so did I. Ms. Tomazik, am I saying that right, also wrote a letter. And her letter, I believe, was very close to an ethical breach. I believe when you're elected to the board, from the time you wake up in the morning until the time you go to sleep, you're a board member first and foremost. And everything you say, you say as a board member, unless you identify yourself and you give a disclaimer that you're speaking for yourself. And Mrs. Tomazik wrote a letter to the editor, and she expressed some views, and unfortunately, I don't have that. That's one of the things, was her exact statement. But she said something to the effect, and I'm sorry, I can't quote you exactly, that we shouldn't be putting our emphasis on education based on doing better than what other countries are doing. And I'm sorry for, I don't have your exact wording in front of me. And maybe it's a generational thing. But I grew up during the space race, and John F. Kennedy saying that we were going to get to the moon before the Russians did. And that race led to all the technical advances that we enjoy today, from computers to cellphones, have their roots in that race. America didn't get to be number one, other than trying to be number one. In that case, it was doing better than the Russians. And we most certainly have to do better than the Chinese now. I also had a quote that I wanted to read you from Teddy Roosevelt, and I don't have it in front of me, and I'm not going to attempt to recite the entire thing. But he was our first progressive, and at the time that he spoke this, in this country, there was a tremendous amount of bias and discrimination and exploitation of different immigrant groups. And what he said, and I'll paraphrase, is that any man that comes to this country to be an American should never be discriminated against because of his origin or his creed or his birthplace. But that that was predicated on that person assimilating himself entirely to being an American. And he went on to say that any American that claims to be an American in something else also is no American at all. And he said, "In this country, we have room for one flag, and that is the American flag. And we have room but for one language, and that is the English language. And we have room for but one loyalty, and that is to the American people." And I think that that really holds true today, even more so than it did in 1907, when Teddy Roosevelt uttered that. And remember, that was actually in defense of immigrants that came to this country and wanted to be American. And this goes back, I think, to what Ms. Tomazik said, because I think that we have to stop putting the emphasis on maybe hurting somebody else's feelings and keep the emphasis on making America number one. And certainly, that, that starts with the education of our children and the allegiance to this country. And I think we absolutely have to wake America up to this, or America's going to die in her sleep. Thank you very much.
Yes. First, I'd like to actually have the lawyers state. I submitted that letter to the editor.
to stop putting the emphasis on maybe hurting somebody else's feelings and keep the emphasis on making America number one. And certainly, that that starts with the education of our children and the allegiance to this country. And I think we absolutely have to wake America up to this, or America's going to die in her sleep. Thank you very much.
Yes. First, I'd like to actually have the lawyers state. I submitted that letter to the editor as as Mary Ann Tomazik. As I'm aware, I cannot speak for the Board. I'm not legally allowed to speak for the Board. I'm only allowed to speak for myself. Could you give us some legal guidance in terms of whether that was an ethical violation?
Well, I haven't seen the letter. I don't have the slightest idea what it says, except for what I just heard, but the general principle that you just stated is the correct one, that a Board member may not speak as a Board member without the express authority of the Board to do so. And usually, when a Board member speaks in a public way, it's appropriate to either by implication or expression, make it clear that you're speaking for yourself. So I haven't seen the letter, but if it if it met that standard, I think it would be all right. If it led someone to believe that you were speaking as a Board member, it would not be all right. So you know what it says, I don't, but that's the context.
Okay. And in reference, my letter states, and I'm just going to quote it because I have it here, "Our academic drive and pursuit of knowledge should not be motivated primarily by the achievements of people in foreign countries, but rather by the need to constantly push ourselves to grow and improve from where we are today." I purposely put the part primarily in because I understand that a lot of the progress has been fueled by other countries' achievements. But whether it's an ideological difference, I think primarily we should be concerned with educating our children for the fact that they should be better than where we are today.
Okay. Next up, we have one of my favorites. Oh, I'm sorry.
Next up, we have one of my favorites, Gloria Close.
Mr. Close.
All right, Gloria Close.
Good evening. First of all, Dr. Hazel and the team, that was a great presentation. Thank you. Mr. Bruno thanked the members of his policy committee at the last meeting. Now I think it's my turn to say thank you. It was a pleasure working with you and the rest of the members. Thank you very much. I requested a copy of Mr. Sampson's contract for review. We all know that his salary is at $177,500. I will not detail all the perks that came along with the job. I do want to question the Board with the exception of Ms. Tomazik, Mr. Acetola, and Mr. Messenger, who were not seated Board member members at the time the Board ratified the contract. In his contract, it says he is eligible for an annual merit pay of $26,625. It will be based on Mr. Sampson's progress towards achieving the district goals. This struck me hard. In a corporate world, if you don't perform to their expectations, you are let go. If you do perform above and beyond their expectations, you keep your job. Also, the Board will automatically provide Mr. Sampson with a yearly 2% increase, no matter what kind of economic conditions the country sees.
That's incorrect, Ms. Close. That's incorrect.
That's what I found from the contract. I read from your contract. And also, he has the use of the leased luxury car that we have you that was used by the former superintendent. I believe once the lease is over and the car is turned into dealer, he will no longer be provided with another vehicle. What's more upsetting is that the Board granted Mr. Sampson a four-year contract. The state requires only a three-year contract. If Mr. Sampson is terminated on his third year, the Board has to pay him a full salary plus the perks agreed upon for the entire fourth year. If he stays three years and one day, he's tenured. This is not a smart decision.
There's no tenure for superintendents in the state of New Jersey, Ms. Close. And I don't mean to interrupt you, but, you know, you're making some very inaccurate statements there about my contract and about state law and what is or is not allowed.
Isn't it that state now before, okay, when I was a Board member for the K-8 in Manalapan, the superintendent was not, yes, was not tenured, and the contract was renewed yearly. Now the state approves it for three years contract, but if it's them, it's not.
May I help out here?
Yes, sir.
Here's what the state law is. Superintendents' contracts may be three, four, or five years in duration, no other term, three, four, or five. There is no tenure for superintendents, doesn't matter how long they stay. So that any superintendent, no matter how long he or she has been in the district, may be non-renewed by Board without going through a tenure process. The merit increase provision that you referred to doesn't originate in Mr. Sampson's contract. It's taken verbatim from the state regulation about what a how merit increases are to be awarded and what what percentages there to be. What's expressed in his contract is a maximum, not a minimum nor a guarantee. And most importantly, as I think you know, but let me make sure, Mr. Sampson's contract falls under the newly enacted regulations. They were enacted, they became effective last February, February 7th, I think. And immediately after those regulations took effect, the contract was thoroughly reviewed by Mr. Passamont, the acting executive county superintendent for the county, and it was approved by him on behalf of the Department of Education.
I do understand the process that went through Mr. Edelstein. In fact, I was the one asking, was under the county superintendent's review, if we can at least freebie on some of the terms in the contract, but we were not. Okay? And the information I got was based directly from the contract that I offered. So whatever's in the contract, that's all I wrote in my presentation.
There are no guaranteed 2% increases, as I recall that.
Ms. Close, I emailed you my contract this afternoon, so I'm not sure what you're referencing.
I had a contract, which I got through Mr. Boyce. If you emailed it to me this afternoon, I don't know.
Okay. I mean, you made the request yesterday.
I did not make a request.
She asked me a question yesterday.
Okay. You asked a question about my contract yesterday, and I took it upon myself to email you a PDF copy of my contract directly so that you could review it yourself without bothering to open it. And after you made your request, had it posted online this afternoon. So anyone can certainly review the contract. It's within the state regulations. I have no concerns about anything unethical in my contract.
Like I said, Mr. Sampson, I offered that contract before. I based my information from that contract. If you emailed me whatever contract you have in your hand this afternoon, I did not get to that. I was at home.
The only contract I have is the one that I signed, and that's what I sent you. What was done prior to my arrival, I can't speak to, Ms. Close.
I'm not going to argue with you, Mr. Sampson. I just so happen to have a contract that I offered through Mr. Boyce, and that's what I based the information from. Okay? Whatever you sent me this afternoon, I had, I did not get access to that. At any rate, here is my question. How could this Board justify this kind of contract in this economic environment? Now, since I hope my time is not taken up, because I do have questions on the agenda. On page seven of the agenda, the transportation aides, at this special meeting on July 11, they came to ask the Board why they were terminated. Now they are on the agenda for renewal. I'm happy for them. But my question here is, why do they have longevity pay ranging from $5,000 to $22,000? Went back to the April 27, 2009 agenda, and also I found that the building custodial supervisors receive longevity pay of up to $4,500. Why so? I brought this longevity of the assistant superintendent at the last meeting, which I was told by Mr. Sampson that it was now permanently removed from the contract from the time on. Who are promised longevity in the district? This is really, it blew my mind off, longevity. Thank God you still have your job. That's all what I said. But if they stay five, 10 years, and they will be awarded, let's say, $22,000, boy, you are very generous with the taxpayers' money. It really pains me that this kind of money can be going to the children for the education. Now, negotiations are about to start. I hope the Board will remove this longevity clause in any future contracts. The approval of teachers and staff with the Race Academy. It says on your agenda, four hours per day, not to exceed 20 hours per week at $48 an hour. Some of the staff on the list works full-time in Manalapan High School. If the school counselor from Manalapan works at the Freehold High School where the Race Academy is being held for a total of 20 hours, is the staff regular salary reduced, since the staff will be working 20 hours at the Race Academy and getting paid at the rate of $48 an hour? The cafeteria in detention practice, I just want to ask that, are they negotiating contract with the staff? When I look at the cafeteria, I computed all the people that would be involved from all the six schools. There's about 161 staff at the rate of 655. That is a total of 1,5,455. The detention, there's about from the six schools, there are 14 at the rate of $34.86. Instead of using our teaching staff, why don't we post a position at, let's say, $10 or whatever the asking rate right now, an hour, like what they do at the other schools, like the Manalapan English Town, they hire, you know, people from the public. It is a tremendous savings to the district and at the same time offer more jobs to the public. The detention normally occurs at the end of the school session. We have, we have a principal, we have three assistant principals, we have supervisors, we have guidance counselors, secretaries, who can watch the kids while in the office. I know that the student sits in the office and do nothing or do their homework if they choose to. They only are watched up to maybe 30, 40 an hour. Now on your page 11, just like.
Gloria, I'm not going to be rude. I'm just going to ask, how many more questions are there?
Not too much, because I was, I wish.
Because I am being really fair. I mean, we're going way over time.
Yeah, because.
But I know, I know, that's why I'm just asking, how many more questions?
Three, four.
Three, four?
Yeah. Because you know what it is, Mr. President?
Oh, no, don't say that, please.
Okay, Mr. Heskey.
Thank you.
Before, we have the public input for the agenda items, and then we have the public input per se, whatever the public wants to say. But now we have one meeting a month, and now we are, the agenda items, whatever the public says.
Two meetings a month?
Well, on the schedule, it's only one a month. I don't know, maybe you haven't published the second one. I must be reading the wrong site now, but there's only one. But at any rate.
Good one.
We are given four minutes that we can combine what we want to say and the agenda items. That really cutting us.
I gave you way more than four minutes, Gloria.
Okay, can I just finish a question?
Go ahead, do the three or four questions.
The approval of para-professional to assist a student participating in after-school outlet and extracurricular activities at $28.72, not to exceed 100 hours, and the approval of para-professional to assist students in the before-school program in the Regional Learning Academy at Manalapan High School from 6:45 to 7:30, not to exceed 180 hours at $28.72. Are these two mandated by the state? You can ask, you can answer me later. The salary, the approval of salaries funded by the FY20, I meant 2012, No Child Left Behind. There are three full-time teaching staff to be hired at a total of $170,000 plus benefits. Are these positions only for this year, since it is a grant money? If not, will the district maintain these three positions year after year through district's payroll if the grant money does not come through the following year? Page 17, are these positions purely on the volunteer time and no salary requested on page 17? If so, we should encourage the public to come forward. If monetary compensation is involved, what is the rate? And I guess for Dr. Hazel, the Regional Learning Academy psychiatric service, do we bid for the services or do they apply for the job? I just want one quick question, if you don't mind, President. I heard there was already a presentation by the finance. I believe Mr. Messenger is the finance chairperson. I've been waiting for the application for the finance committee to be published on the website. I never read it yet. I know the other public relation is being formed or formed already. I applied, and I was responded by Mr. Sampson that my application to be part of the finance budget is not forwarded to Mr. Shaun. I guess he will be the one to decide, but from what I'm hearing, the finance committee finances last budget is now already formed. Is there a chance for me? Because I was, the policy before, I'd like to extend myself and learn more by being part of the committee, because that was my background, was an accountant. And I believe I can be an asset to that committee. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say one thing, Gloria. You know that those school bus aides with those longevity things, first of all, that contract was done before most of the people on this Board or on the Board. So it has nothing to do with Mr. Sampson, or I would probably say six of the nine current Board members. It was done with the teacher's contract, which was three or four years ago. So to break that contract, let me finish, to break that contract, it would cost us more money in legal fees, because legally, we can't do that. As far as hiring them back, I'll take responsibility for that, because we were going to just summarily dismiss them, and this district has a horrible history and reputation of dealing with its people in an, in, I would say, an inhuman way. And I've seen that firsthand. So we implored Mr. Sampson and Mr. Boyce to keep these people on for one more year and then ask them to come back to the bargaining table and negotiate with us, and if they don't, then obviously, you know, the consequences, they know what will happen. But what bothers me is that I understand why you were upset three or four years ago about what was going on in the district. I have no idea why you're upset now. If you saw Mr. Sampson this morning with the supervisors, he was worth every single penny he has paid plus more. And I'm just speaking as someone who's been in education for 35 years and had seen what has gone on here.
I'm not against Mr. Sampson. I just, I just have to have a contract. I have nothing against this, but I just wanted to speak about.
Oh, no, you're, you're more than welcome. Okay. I just think you might have the wrong contract.
No. Well, whatever they, they email me, whatever I offer, whatever they send to me, now another thing, Mr. Heskey, on the longevity, if that was the contract, but I'm asking the Board this year to negotiate here.
Oh, believe me, we're going to, we're going to.
Because $40 and getting $22,000 for longevity have a problem with that.
All right, next up, we have Helen Hochberg.
Tonight, I would like to address item H2 on page 12 to Ms. Evangelista. Nancy Bailey from Marlboro High School is being appointed to curriculum and development for life skills for an additional stipend. Looking back to the May 9th agenda, Ms. Bailey is scheduled to take a maternity leave of absence from September 29th through November 4th. Will her maternity leave have any impact on her involvement with this committee? In addition to this stipend, Ms. Bailey is the FCC LA advisor as well as the class advisor for the class of 2012. As a new mom, how will Ms. Bailey continue to fulfill her current obligations and take on this additional commitment of her time? Are the stipends that Ms. Bailey earns prorated? And my next question is, once again, I have a question for Mr. Edelstein. Several meetings ago, you assured the public and this Board that the insurance claim to recover most of the money spent in the Bonnie Sue Rosenwald case would be recovered before the next Board meeting. Here we are, three meetings later, so I would like to ask, has any of this money been recovered from this insurance company? Thank you for your time.
I can answer that one easily. You know, I think that I've told you in the past that $100,000 was tendered, which the Board has not yet accepted, because we think it's an inadequate compensation, and unfortunately, it takes. it takes two sides to reach an agreement, and we're doing it as rapidly as we possibly can. It's complicated getting through the hierarchy of this particular insurance claim to get agreement. I'm confident we'll have it very soon.
With the curriculum writing, actually, those are curriculums for the special education department, and Nancy Bailey has been and will continue to fulfill her responsibilities. Their timesheets and logging of hours are reported to my office, which I review, and, you know, she has written a curriculum in the past, and she's very, very diligent about her work and her responsibilities.
Okay. Go, go. I think there was a question regarding the funding of positions for, through NCLB, and whether or not those positions would continue if the grant money ever did not come. NCLB has been a very stable funding source, and anytime there's a change in grant funding, the district will deal with it in whatever the appropriate way is at that time. For the coming year, though, we actually got a higher allocation than we had in the last year, so at this point, that funding is in place.
Last, but at least we have Leon Saronik.
Before I begin, I have a couple of points or questions regarding the bullying program that you presented. Bullying can also be defined as assault, robbery, and other kind of criminal actions, and I didn't see or hear any kind of process in which the police might be brought in to deal with this situation. And I'm just wondering, are you going to keep everything?
Any of the matters with harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and if anything is elevated to a level of an assault or any type of physical confrontation between students, that then is reported to our SRO, and that's all outlined in our student code of conduct. So absolutely, you know, our administrators take that next step, you know, with these, with incidents of assault or, you know, student fights, et cetera.
But does that involve police notification?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, because that wasn't, I was listening to hear anything like that.
There was one section in the presentation, because our committee wanted to be very clear about that, and following our protocols in our student handbook, student-parent handbook, but I believe there is a citation in there about adherence to the code of conduct. So harassment, intimidation, and bullying hazing was always a policy, you know, but any matters, you know, of that magnitude are absolutely reported to the police.
Right, okay. And what happens if a parent feels that their child is falsely accused and decides to sue the board? I mean, how is that dealt with? Is that part of the bullying process and how you deal with that?
It's not, it's not. I think that would be on a case-by-case basis, and we would have to obviously refer to legal counsel about how that would be handled, but I think it would be a different scenario depending on the situation.
Okay, now, as far as my remarks, and I'll just preface it by saying that I'm, whatever I'm saying here is not to disparage Mr. Sampson's abilities as the superintendent. I'm sure he's qualified and is working very well with the public and the, and the rest of the staff. But I felt after reading the interview with you in the Asbury Park Press, I had to respond to something that you said, and let me be clear, I'm not the only one who reacted the same way to something that you said. What bothered me and the others about the article and what prompted me to speak tonight was your comment, and I quote, "What was lacking was leadership. The district has been hampered by distractions." You are new here, and this is not the first time that the word distractions has been used to describe what occurred during the past few years before Dr. Kegler, so aidly, filled in. And I felt, and the others did too, it's an insult to all of us who are still coming to these meetings, to those of us who have been bullied and harassed by the former superintendent and his cronies, and the many teachers and students and parents who had the guts enough to speak out about what's happening. A board member was forced off the board because she spoke out against the superintendent. Many of us in the public were frequently insulted at the meetings, not only by Mr. Wasser, but other officials of the board. The year the scandal broke, the Asbury Park Press called it "The Story of the Year." What happened here was not a distraction, and it was not a mistake either, as the former Colts neck representative liked to say. This was a planned action by an unethical group of educators to scam the system, the board, and the public by getting those phony doctorate degrees. It brought disgrace to the district across the country, and the state of New Jersey had to pass an actual law to prevent others from doing the same thing. What happened was not a distraction, but a disgrace. And yes, I am still angry about it, because at every meeting, I still see the last vestige of what happened, still sitting on the board, still holding on to her job, and I feel that's a disgrace. I understand that many here are tired of us speaking out about this matter. We would all like to see this mess put behind us. And Mr. Sampson, I'm sure you did not intend to generate this kind of reaction with what you said, but as an educator, you know that words mean what they mean, and when many of us read in the paper that you are minimizing the last three years as a distraction, it brought back too many bad memories.
I'm sorry we have a different perception on it, Mr. Saronik. With all due respect, the term distraction was meant in context of the educational process within the school district, which had, at the time, nothing to do with what was going on around what was happening in the classrooms day-to-day. That's what I meant by distraction, meaning let's focus on the academics of the school and push the school district forward. I'm in the seat now, superintendent. I can't undo anything that occurred in the past. I can't change it. I can't reach back and make it play out differently. All I can do is move forward with the school district. That's what I was hired to do. For me, it would be a disservice in this seat as superintendent of schools of the Freehold Regional High School District if I spent my time looking, looking back and not looking forward. That's, that's my job. So there was certainly no intent to minimize any of the, the public perception of what happened, the public sentiment, the public feeling, what, the discourse that took place at board meetings, none whatsoever. However, I honestly don't want to spend my time talking about what occurred a couple years ago, because I can't undo it, can't change it, can't make it play out any differently with anyone. All I can do is push forward, and that's what I came here to do, and, and that's what I'm trying to do. And when I said lack of leadership, it was no slight to Dr. Kegler whatsoever. Dr. Kegler was wearing two hats all of last year. As the acting superintendent, as the assistant superintendent for human resources. And what happens when you divvy up all those jobs is that things fall through the cracks because there's just not enough folks minding the certain aspects that occur. So that was all that that, that comment made. I'm here as the superintendent of schools, and it's my job to make this district the most effective district it can be in relation to student achievement, and everything should go back to the student achievement here, and that's achievement on academic, social, and emotional lines, and it's something I'm passionate about. I think there's unbelievable talent in this district, and I don't think we focus on all the good that happens enough, because there's an unbelievable amount of truly positive things that happen in this school district that don't happen in other places, because we are so unique, being the six high school setup. So I'm happy to be here, no intent to minimize anyone's perception over what happened, no slight intended certainly, but I've got to push forward as the superintendent of schools. That's, that's it.
I have a question about how you explained it, was just that the word distraction was used too many times during Mr. Wasser's term of year in trying to minimize it, and there was no, I was not referring anything you said to Dr. Kegler.
Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break, and I mean, five minutes, it's getting late, so, but we have a request of the board, so just five minutes, we'll be back on before 5 of 10. Five minutes! We miss him.
I know.
Can I start without? Can I start without?
Yeah, it was a quick response. I went through my whole point.
Five minutes, it's 5 of 10. Okay, we are going to go through the agenda, H1 to H5.
Can I speak about H1?
Yeah.
Before there's a motion, there's, just to note that there's an addendum, and this is on the back table as well, Dr. Kegler?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, which includes H1, H2, H3, and H6.
H6.
There's an H6. Okay, and also some corrections have been distributed to the board. They include, on page 7, reappointment of transportation aides, remove the name Lynn Erickson. Pages 8 and 9 on honoraria, Caitlin Nagle and Kelly Schwerer are out of district and should have an asterisk before their name, so that's just a notation. Page 12, Jocelyn Henley should be Heaney, so it's a typo there. Under the change section on page 13, Joseph Iapulo's start date should be August 22nd, 2011. And on page 19, under the volunteer section, remove the name Shayna Chagrin, cheerleading at Freehold Township High School. Anything further, Dr. Kegler? I need a motion.
A motion.
Motion. Mary Ann second. Bill.
Michael?
Yeah, I just want to say I was quite sad when I saw H1, because I see that Robert Silvestri is going to be retiring on July 1st, and I just wanted to say that he was a phenomenal teacher, I'm sure he still is a phenomenal teacher, and he's just one of those teachers that I think makes this district phenomenal, and I was glad to have him, and I'm sorry to see him go.
Well said.
Well said.
Okay, any other discussion on H1 to H6 now? None. All right, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, next we have J1 to J4. Motion?
What about I?
I skipped I, thank you very much. I1 to I6.
Motion.
Mary Ann, motion?
Jen second.
Discussion?
I may have something.
Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have J1 to J4. That would be, starting on page 22.
Motion.
Motion. Mary Ann?
Second.
Bill second. I'm sorry, should I have a hand?
No, it's good.
Okay. Discussion? No? Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Next, we have K1 to K6.
Motion.
On page 23.
I made the motion.
Jen? Discussion?
Yes. I would like to bring the board's attention to K3, the approval of curriculum guides for the school year. Now, as chairperson of the curriculum committee, I was surprised to find out on Thursday that there were 50 curricula up for approval by the board, and I had not seen a single one beforehand. There, when I saw that there were so many curricula, I obviously went to the site, and I looked at two that I was familiar with, because I took them as a student, and there were errors that were unacceptable to me to receive from the administration. This was grammar, repetition, deletions, mistakes that could easily be seen by simply reading what the curriculum says. And while I can understand how teachers and supervisors who write the curriculum get so involved with the document that they don't see these errors, I find it shocking that between the line of when the curriculum is written or revised to when it's up for board approval, that no one's catching these errors. This was, there was another problem in that this was the first time I was reading it. The curriculum committee should be in charge of viewing the curricula before it even comes up for board approval. I think one of the benefits of having a committee is that we can split up the focus that we need to give all these district issues, and for example, I could spend an hour looking at financial information, but I'm never going to have as good a grasp on that as Mr. Messinger, and thank God he's chairperson of that committee, because that's his expertise. Now, I'm willing to put the, the time in to review all the curricula, but I can't have it the day that every board member has it, because what if I find an error, just like I did this time? So this kind of puts us in a bind, because now the board has two options that I find unacceptable. As Mr. Sampson explained to me, we have to approve a curricula for the school year, and all these proposals are coming up the last meeting before the school year. So basically, our option is to vote no and have misaligned curricula for our schools, or vote yes and have poorly written, well, not poorly written, rather, aligned curricula that have mistakes in them that I'm sure one read-through would have caught. I don't like being put in that position, and while I'm going to vote yes, because I would much rather have our students have aligned curricula than misaligned curricula, I'm definitely going to follow this process through. These curricula need to be revised. I don't think it's the board's responsibility to serve as a copy editor, and I don't think it's fair for the curriculum committee to see it at the same time as the rest of the board. So I just want to make it known to the board that this is an issue that I'm going to be following up with Mr. Sampson and Ms. Evangelista, but that's just my view as your fellow board member.
Okay, the only thing I would like to add to Mary Ann's statement is that if I ever go past, past a school and on their billboard is a misspelled word, it drives me nuts, because, I mean, we're in the business, although I hate to use the word business, but it is, of education, and then yet we put up on our website this document that has, you know, spelling mistakes and grammar mistakes, and I just don't understand that. And as I'm sure some of the people in the audience will attest to.
I mean, if we can't accept these mistakes from students, I'm certainly not going to accept them from our staff or administration.
Well said.
I can add something to that, too. Last night, Mary Ann spent probably an hour and a half on the phone with me discussing some of the errors, just some of the errors, and I certainly appreciate the due diligence that she puts forward in reviewing these documents, which she shouldn't have to. I mean, we should have these documents come to us without these kind of errors, and it's not the first time that it's happened, so it really has to be something that's addressed.
Any other comments on the Ks? K1 to K6? Seeing none, Mr. Vois?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, L1 to L9? I have just a couple brief language changes to those. I forwarded these to Jason already, so he can include them. Just under the HIB policy on page 41, we'd agreed to strike where it says "witness one with reliable information" and replace that simply with "witness." And then on page 54, the wording should read, "If available, when the student athlete is exhibiting signs or symptoms, the licensed athletic trainer and/or the school or team physician will evaluate the student/athlete." Minor changes, nothing that changes the content of either policy.
Mr. Sampson, on page 48, in the suicide prevention policy, we want to strike in grades nine through 12, just so there's nothing misconstrued with a student who may be repeating grade 12, or a student who is with us till age 21.
Gotcha. Any other discussion? I have one. I'd like to table L9 at this time until I find the answers to some clarifications to some questions that were posed. Voice? No more than discussing? Amendment to instructional service agreement for chapters 192 and 193. So the motion be L1 through L8? Correct. Okay. Another discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Vois? I'm sorry, did I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mary Ann?
Mr. Acetola?
That's the motion to table L9?
No, this is the motion on L1 through 8. L9 was administratively tabled.
Okay, great. So then, yes, L1 through L8.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
L1 through 7, I vote yes. L through 8, L8 rather, I'm voting no, because as you recall, that's the phys ed policy, which I don't agree with, because I think there's too much athletic segregation with our children, as it is.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to any old business? Any new business?
I have something. Okay. This is, what I'm going to talk about really is a merging of some comments from Tyler Nelson, who actually was inducted into the Marlborough High School Hall of Fame last year, and myself. I'm taking what he wrote, and I'm just chiming in with some my thoughts, but 1982 was 29 years ago, so next year, the class of 1982 at Marlborough High School is going to be having their 30-year reunion, and I would assume almost all these people are going to be 48 years old. And I think the issue is that with all these high school reunions, you pay an insane amount of money, and it's at the Sheridan in Eaton Town, and you pretty much get nothing out of your money. You have to pay for everything at the reunion, and most of them don't pan out too well. So there's a segment of the population from the class of 1982 that would like to hold their 30-year reunion on the grounds of Marlborough High School next year. And basically, what Mr. Nelson has to say is that if you really look at the big picture also, it would help if high schools have active alumni. Now, I know we're in the Northeast, it's a lot different than what goes on in other parts of the country, where you have alumni associations that are similar to what transpires in college, where you're always donating money and getting actively involved. But he says that high schools need active alumni, a nice party in the gym or in the cafeteria organized by alumni could stimulate more interest in the schools. The schools could assist the alumni, and if the school, if the board doesn't want it inside the school, maybe could have a large temp party outside, which would be even better. You know, most people who attend reunions are the ones who really enjoyed their high school experience. They have a lot of pride in their school, and building alumni participation and recognizing successful alumni helps the school. So I think the real issue is, and what some people have concern, you know, everyone thinks it's a great idea. They want to go back to Marlborough High School, but 48-year-old people would want to have alcohol at their 30-year reunion. So this is not a politically correct situation, and I believe the state of New Jersey does not have a law that you cannot have alcohol on school grounds. So I just want to throw this out there as to whether this Board of Education would be receptive to a group of 48-year-old people having their 30-year high school reunion on the grounds of Marlborough High School.
Stephen, is there any law?
There is. Here's what the law is. The law with respect to alcohol is found in two places. Now, somebody who's underage can't ever have alcohol, period. There's no exception to that with respect to school facilities. However, here's what the statute says with respect to people of legal age, and it's 2C 33-16. "Any person of legal age to purchase alcoholic beverages who knowingly and without the express written permission of the school board, its delegated authority, or any school principal brings or possesses alcoholic beverage on any school property is guilty of a disorderly persons offense." So what that means is that the Board of Education or its designated representative has the right to authorize in writing the possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages on school premises, obviously not while kids are around. There's a second source of information about this, and that's the Uniform Memorandum between Boards of Education and Law Enforcement, which is signed on here as well. And in that, there's a section called "possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages," and it too says that it is an offense for an adult to bring or possess an alcoholic beverage on school grounds without the express written permission of the school board. So as far as the alcoholic beverages part is concerned, there is no blanket prohibition, but the written permission of the school board is required. As far as the general use of facilities, that question is answered by whatever your facilities policy says about the use of facilities in other than school hours.
Well, I mean, so basically, what would people think about allowing the 30-year reunion to happen next year at Marlborough High School on school grounds?
Let me ask you this question, Mike. Is it in five years, 10 years, 15 years? Where does it stop? And if, let's say someone's 23 years old, leaves Marlborough High School after drinking and consuming alcohol on Marlborough's campus and gets into an accident, who's responsible?
Well, the insurance, well, look, I'm out of way.
I'm just asking a question.
But I'm saying, I understand, but, and I understand all about this, you know, legal stuff and political correctness, but, I mean, it's got to stop somewhere. Like, it is, I just think personally, it's insane. Theoretically, your worst-case scenario, the 48-year-old person gets drunk and gets into an accident, if people say, "Oh, you know, that regional high school district, they advocate alcohol consumption," you know, whoever would think that? You know, just doesn't know what they're talking about. So you could take political correctness to the nth degree, and believe me, I know all about the underage drinking, the negative ramifications, but this is a whole nother universe and stratosphere, in my opinion, of what transpires with alcohol. So that's my take on it.
Mr. Messinger, can I pose a different situation? We allow a 48-year-old to drink on our property, and meanwhile, in the back of the school is a school bus that's letting off the field hockey team, and they're walking the parking lot, and someone chooses to drink and drive, and they hit a student.
Well, now, this would be a high school reunion, so this would not be occurring when school was in session. This would be on a Saturday evening.
Okay, well, if there's a student on our campus. I mean, regardless, if there is a kid walking in our parking lot or walking around the school grounds, I mean, just to say that the worst-case scenario is that they drink and get into an accident, I think the worst-case scenario is that someone would get killed.
Yeah, but you could say that, well, first of all, we could go back and forth, right? The kid would be trespassing, well, trespassing, they shouldn't even be there. What they're doing on school grounds Saturday night at 11 o'clock, I don't know, but you can make this argument about any place. And I'm throwing it out there, I'm giving my opinion, I'm talking for a segment of the population who graduated in 1982, that's where it's at. I want to get people's feedback. I know it's not politically correct, but that's what I feel.
Michael, is this something that the board can think about? I mean, we don't have to make a decision tonight, right?
Oh, yeah, right. This is another, this is, I guess, a year away.
Can you, did you get a letter about this?
No, the guy, he was on Facebook, and then I saw people responding to him, because the first thing they brought up was, "Oh, they'll never let you do it, there's no alcohol allowed there." So then somebody else would chime in about, "Well, we're 48 years old." You know, "How extreme could you take these anti-alcohol measures?" So that was basically it. He sent me an email.
If you have a 30-year reunion, you say the 48-years-old, they're more, and then you start, then everybody's going to say, "Well, if you let them have a 30-year reunion, why can't we have a 50-year reunion, and a 10-year reunion?" Then you're opening up like a whole can of worms, because then everyone's going to want a reunion there, and a 50-year reunion, like those 23-year-olds are a lot different than 48-year-olds. Well, maybe not, but...
Good to see.
I think maybe you could respond and be like, if you want this to be formally considered by the board, send a letter to Sean, and then Sean can distribute it out as a board communication, and that way we have time to actually think about it.
That's fine. Sounds good. Okay, and before we close the meeting, two things, right? One is, on this coming Saturday, Free Hall Borough will be hosting a tour for the 50th reunion of the class of 1961. So I just wanted to not ignore them and give them props for coming. I will be giving the tour. Last year, I gave a tour, and I lost two people, so this year, I'm going to try much better not to lose anyone in the building. Now, Mr. Sampson? Just... No, no, they're not drinking. It's just a tour. It's a tour. It's not a brewery tour, it's just a tour of the high school. Just one final note, I'd just like to formally welcome Joe Iaculo as the new math supervisor at Free Hall High School, and David Bleakley as the new assistant supervisor. Okay, can we have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Mary Ann and Liz. So shall you say, shall it be done?